The wisdom, the courage, and the knowledge and the strength to make the right decision for the people of this county and this town. Father, we owe you so much, there ain't no way we can pay you back, except believe, love, and trust in you. Father, I ask you to please keep your good family in your prayer. Be chatty and comfortable on God as long as you can. We're bad and much sorrow right now. Father God, we thank you and we love you and pray. Your precious, wonderful, holy name, my good Father, and goodness.
(Inaudible) (Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. First order of business this morning, I do have a couple of announcements to make. Remember, folks, today's election day. If you have not had your opportunity to vote, please go out and do so. It's very important. Also, today is also a very important day because forty years ago today, today, forty years ago, Bobby Bowden celebrated his first year at Florida State.[88.11][88.11](Laughter).
I thought you was gonna say forty years ago today, Mr. and Mrs. Meeks.
No, 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 no.
In the June of 2000.[97.11][97.11](Laughter).
(Inaudible).
(Inaudible). Both comments. This morning, we have Mr. Mayor Weiss from Yankee Town like to speak. Both comments.
Sorry, I didn't have time to get something like this on the agenda. Last night, our council had a meeting and the tree committee presented us with a survey that they did of the trees on the town and county right of ways. They looked at trees that pose a serious hazard, that are weak, severely leaning dead, and are overhanging in such a manner that they're likely to cause serious damage to structures or power lines and/or major road blockages. The survey was separated on Riverside from the other town roads in case the council wanted to try to get to the county to attend to Riverside. I have a, and I didn't have the time to make other maps, but I have two copies here. And then on this paper, there's a listing of where each tree is and whether it's a high priority. We're only asking that you help us with the ones that are in the county right of way. There aren't that many. And I can, you know, we can bring this up another time. I just wanted to get you the information so that you could have the road or whoever takes care of this who would have a chance to look into it.
How many, how many trees do?
On Riverside.
It's on the county right of way.
Riverside, one, 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 two, three, four to remove, to re-sprue.
Are they real big?
Yeah, they're big trees that are threatening homes. I mean, we've had, after the storm, we had a lot of homes damaged by trees that came down, not only the county trees, they were trees that were on the people's property. But just looking to the future, some of these trees, I mean, the branches are like leaning over people's roofs and some of them are dead and diseased. I did have an arborist come out a while back and he did a little walk through and he said there are trees that really should come down. Is anybody here, can I give you the speech?
Do you might have any comments on this before I speak?
The ones that are after pruning or those on the right of way as well?
Yes. Well, they're not diseased, they're not diseased. I mean, we don't, we're trying to make it so that they don't, we don't want to lose all of our trees, but trees that are diseased or damaged, we do want to get rid of before they close the crop. And large overhanging branches. I mean, I know one night during, even after the storm, I got a call at eleven o'clock at night that there was a branch down blocking a road and it was off of a county right of way tree. Yeah, there's two separate. How about different views or something on this? The ones that are on our roads, don't even worry about.
I see ones and threes.
Um, maybe that has, maybe that has to do with the page they're on. I gave Alice the list and showed which needs pruning, which needs.
I'm sure that we can find the time and the resources to help you out with this. Final request, the board doesn't like this, they can tell me no. I want to be sure that you prove this with your residents. Because the last thing I want to do is go down there and start sawing down a tree.
Oh, no, no, this was already approved.
And everybody in Yankee Town be mad at the county commissioners for cutting down their trees.
No, this was, this came from a community meeting we had in September.
Okay.
Where residents purely, we've changed, we're changing our tree ordinance. They're just.
Yes, ma'am. You know what I'm saying, though? I don't want to get on your story.
Yes.
Everybody's saying.
No, in fact, they had the trees marked. I said to them, take those markings down because the people are going to start asking too many questions ahead of time, whether, you know, so if something happened to that tree before the request came in and before we got to it, I didn't want them to say, see, you shouldn't have removed it.
Mayor, are we talking about chainsaws or are we talking about digging them up?
Chainsaw.
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 Yeah, chainsaw. I mean, they're dead, they're dead and diseased. Chainsaw them down and we can get one of our tree guys maybe to do the stump grinding if necessary. I mean, we want to work with you, but we're just asking for some help because we have a lot, we've put like six thousand, six thousand more dollars into the budget this year just to get these trees taken care of.
I don't think so. I think we can just ask staff to take care of it. Casey, Alice, y'all are here. I expect them to come and deliver the message, please. And somebody needs to get, you know, Mayor Weiss right there. So we're cutting down our trees.
Yeah, we'll have one of the guys from the tree committee meet you and go over whatever you need to, thank you.
Thank you. That was the only formal request for public comment. Is there anybody else here this morning who'd like to speak for public comment? All right, seeing now we will move on. Mr. Anita Howard is here from Haven Hospice. Good morning, Ms. Howard.
Good morning. I'm Anita Howard. I'm the administrator of Haven Hospice of the tri-county area. I'm here today as the Board of Commissioners to designate November as National Hospice and Palliative Care Month for the following reasons. Hospice and palliative care empowers people facing a serious or life-limiting illness to live as fully as possible, surrounded and supported by family and loved ones. Repay their sense of management control, care givers training and assistance, emotional and spiritual support. Patients live fully and make more meaningful moments until the end, surrounded and supported by the faces of loved ones, friends, and committed caregivers. Every year, more than 1.6 million Americans living with life-limiting illness and their families receive care from our National Hospice service programs. And at Haven Hospice, we have the honor and privilege to provide direct care to over 14,000 individuals in 2015 with life-limiting illnesses, as well as provide counseling and grief support to over 8,000 individuals and families. In closing, I'd like to thank the Leavy County Board of Commissioners and the citizens of Leavy County for your continued support of Haven Hospice in allowing us to provide comfort, care, and compassion.
Our conclusions are approved by Commissioner Wood, sent by Commissioner Rockneak. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed? Before you leave, Ms. Howard, will you be there for the Veterans Day, the Veterans Dinner? Give us a brief synopsis on that. I wanted to come, but I'm kind of busy with work.
Yes, last Friday, we held our annual Veterans Lunch and we had over 200 veterans send attendance.
And the dinner y'all had at the Cracker House.
At the farm.
I made that, the packing house.
Yes.
Was very well put on and very, that was more people than I've seen there in a long time.
We had it on, we had it a free hundred.
Attended. It was very nice.
Thank you. Ms. Collins?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners?
Good morning.
I'm here this morning to garner your blessing, to have the 28 volumes from the publication "Search for Yesterday" digitized by the University of Florida. To give you a little history, back in 1976, Leavy County Board of County Commissioners asked a group of volunteers to compile one volume about the history of Leavy County to commemorate the American Bicentennial. It was so popular at that time that, and the folks had so much, they had such a good time doing it, they went on and over the years produced 28 volumes. And 2009, the Leavy County Archives Committee decided to disband. And at that time, the board not only dissolved the Leavy County Archives Committee, upon the adoption of an ordinance 2009-42, the board approved placing the archives records under the Leavy County Historical Society. I cannot find ordinance 2009-42, so I don't know what it says. I mean, said that, I'm here today to ask you. Now, when, when it was done back in 2009, there was a question of space at the Baker Building. Did you want to say something? Back in 2009, when this was brought up, there was a question about space at the Baker Building because the Archives Committee had to use and store them as a drawback issue of search yesterday, and also a voter registration records that date back to 1880. Now, the voter registration records, I've had both Ms. Asbell and Ms. Jones sign off on those. They are now in the custody of the Leavy County Archi, or Historical Society, and the university is going to digitize those also. Okay? So, thank goodness for giving free up Mr. Barker's space that he was gracious enough to give us to store these items for the last, what, eight years, seven years? The, there are a number of leftover copies. And this is where we need your direction and guidance, what to do with them. I suggested doing a news article and putting them in the foodhouse lobby and letting people just pick them up as they come in and out of the food. Two of the librarians have expressed interest in having them at their libraries. And I haven't spoken to the other two librarians and I haven't spoken to Lisa and she's not here. So what I need from you all, first of all, is since I can't find that ordinance and don't know what it said, I'd like to have your permission to go ahead with the University of Florida Digitizing Department to have the 28 volumes digitized and placed on the university's historic website.
Will the, so I'm assuming if it's on the website, it would be accessible by everybody?
To the general public. Have you ever been into their website?
I may have, I can say that I have.
Ah, there's a lot of history in there, a lot of oral history that has been posted on there, histories of the counties in Florida. It's a wonderful website. Plus, the university has the back newspapers and their, their newspaper project has been used. To me, I mean, I use it a lot. Leavy County didn't have a lot of newspapers. And the ones that are there come back to the 1860s, 1880s for our county.
I was told that whenever I was in college, they still had this thing called microfiche. There wasn't all this fancy internet, so that would have been.
Oh, I see.
But no, I think it's a wonderful idea because, like you say, hard copies of things, you know, take up space and they're kind of a thing of the past. And as time progresses, you know, we need to step into the digital age and be sure that these, this stuff is preserved for generations to come. And this is probably the best. Digitization or the digitization and the.
Post.
MO. We have motion, Mr. Lloyd, your second to reflect that. A motion and a second to digitize the 28 volumes of search yesterday as well as disseminate the leftover copies. Alice, we see, Alice, the council's deciding to cease it.
Okay, second step. Back when the Archives Committee was, and this is attached to your information in your book.
Just tell them to re-read on that. Do the other way.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is there any further discussion on the motion in hand? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed?
Okay, also, the Archives Committee decided to copyright the copies of search yesterday. I did the work for them and it was the most confusing and frustrating interaction with a government agency I think I've ever had in my life. You can see from the attachment that the Copyright Office issued a copyright on chapter 14, 15, 19, 20, and the all-name index. No explanation, well, no, I take that back. For the first 10 issues, they said, they're too old. Okay, so you can't do those. But why they just chose certain issues, I have no idea. I'm going through it personally right now with my Atlantic Coastline Mailroom Book where the copyright examiner is questioning, who took the photograph on the copy of the book? I did. I took it down in dollars. She won't believe me. So who knows what goes through these people's head? So the second part of this is, the Archives Committee, the application for copyrights is under the Leavy County Archives Committee. Since they were under the Leavy County Board of County Commissioners, I'm asking that you permit me to send a letter to the Copyright Office and we can have Mr. Chairman Meek sign it if you want to put it on board stationery, but I'll compose the letter to dissolve the copyright, the retention of the copyright. It's, it's, there's no sense holding on to it at this point, none at all, and I don't want any future copyright problems.
Most pleasure, the board. Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? I do trust Ms. Tony and her writing ability, but I do think that maybe the letter will come back to us to see what it said.
No problem.
Is that reflected in your motion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Carries.
Thank you. It's all right with you then if we do distribute them through the libraries as opposed to the board office?
As long as somebody gets a copy to ask for it.
Well, Wilber Dean already got it, so.
You know, the council.
Obviously, you're right. I do. It is my birthday.
Oh, good grief. If I had known that, I would have had to sit for you.
Oh, my goodness. I guess we need to say happy birthday.
No, we did.
9:15, is that on the clock? I think there's a question.
Mr. Sherman, I would like to know, with respect to Ms. Collins' statement that the ordinance can be found, where do we keep Leavy County ordinance system states?
We're checking, we're checking on that as we speak. And we have those codified in Tallahassee by our fund. So I've just sent an email to the office, so we're looking to see if it was 47 or 42 or something, but we'll find it.
Yep, the ordinance from September the 22nd, 2009 state that it was, that there was a kind of option of an ordinance 2009-42. And I personally, in going back in there, I believe that the ordinance had to do with the distribution of the funds that the Archives Committee had. I don't know that it had much to do with the, other than saying that the copies go to the Historical Society. So there's an ordinance book downstairs. It jumps from 11 to 47. So somebody needs to update that.
Mr. Chair, I usually have copies of ordinances in my office that I'll keep, copies of the recorded ones. Of course, the clerk is the official keeper down in the basement. I don't keep that book, but you can always, you can always contact my office.
Do you need a copy of it?
I probably have a copy of this one since I probably wrote this one. There should be one in my office. And in the, in the book that we have the codified version, there will be an index to tell which section each of the ordinance is, what section is reflected in the book. I'm not sure that this one went in the book. I'm not sure if this is the codified or not. Well, the clerk's index wouldn't reflect it. This is the index in the municipal code.
And I tried to find it on Mayor Lewis.
It may not have been.
So when we do produce it, when I bring the letter back, I'll bring it, if there's any question. Otherwise, I want to go with this project.
I don't, yes, ma'am. I don't see an issue with it. I mean, it's, it's a, you know, weirdly, you care keeper, so.
You do realize this isn't costing the county any money. Of course it's not. Mike's given me, Commissioner Joyner's given me that book. It is not going to cost the county or the Historical Society any money. Yeah, it is very, but it's expensive to digitize.
Thank you. Is Ms. Flanders here?
No.
Nope.
But Ms. Webb is.
Even better.
Thank you. Now, Lisa does not need that, Ms. Flanders. That's where Commissioner from the town of Angles, here representing the Recreation Committee. And Lisa, Lisa has a restaurant and today's a busy, busy day in restaurant business with all the bugging going on, yes. We are requesting approval to close some streets apart Christmas parade on December 10th, it's as simple as that. The parade will start at four. The parade itself won't be that long, but we will need several hours of closure, maybe an hour of closure.
Thank you for shorting it. Is it the same closure down 40 to 47?
Yeah, there should be, in fact, there should be a copy of the parade right here.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Is there a coverage, you thought? Here. We'll be there, we got it covered.
Good, thank you.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Carries. West.
Good morning, y'all. I'm here today to approve the, for our, our workstations in the dispatch center. They're about 11 years old now, 12 years old, and the motors are starting to fail and some of the electronics on them. I've gone back to the original vendor that sold them to us in the first place and they have some upgraded parts and electronics controls for those. And we can take it out if our carry forward needs.
There we are, you have the moving part.
Yes, sir.
Make the motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. My only question, and I think you touched on it briefly, we have one quote, but that's because the, the parts are unique to the equipment, so it's not like you, five or six people make the same parts. So that was my only question. We have a motion and a second. Motion by Commissioner Joyner, sent by Commissioner Brooks, I believe. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Carries.
Thank you.
Wilbur, can you turn down the air, please? It's getting, it's getting all hot in here with all this. All right, Mr. Wilton has asked to, we skipped ahead on the agenda because he thinks he's important. I would honor his request because it buried himself in terms of he does request that.
Thank you, Mr. Karen. I've got, Rod Davis, the trouble risk was looking today. We're making, we've had damage to our channel markers at the office last day and from a storm, Hurricane Hume. These markers were just constructed back in November 2015. Marlin Marine comes to work for us, went out and done an inspection of the markers and found nine to be damaged, or sorry, seven that were completely be replaced. Five will need to be reconstructed and reset and install a new day board on marker number 23. Marlin went out and done a overview of our damage and came back with $25,000 to replace all damaged markers and get us back into plant with this car. And our recommendation is if we go, Marlin Marine paid $1,000 to do this.
Or this is the firm that has had a home support of it, did a good job for it first time around, and it's expected that this will be reimbursed.
We will, we doubt, we're actually paying them for reimbursed. And the reason I asked, go early this morning for taking the boat out, we're taking a few miles through the markers this morning. I have to run this sound in from the channel, make sure we don't have any shipwrecked signs to be dredged out while we've got them there.
And we've spoken with the contractor and, you know, they're ready to get on it. They're letting me realize they're comfortable.
Make the motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Joyner, second by Commissioner Brooks. Is there any further discussion?
How long is this for?
Usually, they're good for, this will expire on November 26th, but this will expire on November 26th. So we can check out, but I don't anticipate there being any change.
They won't have it done by April.
No, but if you authorize them to give them a notice to proceed, then.
You said they put these general orders there in 2015?
November 20th, yes, sir.
We inspect them November 15th, about here, and sign it off on them. And good news is we won't have a storm like that once every 25 years.
If anything, better coast guard lost some of our markers too to leave them out, replacing all of the down west coast off route.
Rob, me and I spoke about this on the, on the replacement. We're gonna do something to make sure these signs are shored up right because I understand, I haven't seen them, I understand that there's been some wind damage, that we're bending some of the signs.
Yeah, we're, uh.
Is that more of this quote?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. We're going to strengthen the attachment of the day board to the posts so we don't get as much work from the inside.
So, you may else? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Carries. Thank you very much. The vice from the coast guard, just take you down and we'll think about further matters. All right, Mr. Williams.
That's them now, take pictures while you're up today.
Okay, good morning. Got a few items for you this morning. The very first one has to do, it's about that time to de-advertising for the length of tax notices. And the board went out to bid on this a couple of years ago and got a significant reduction in the rates for publishing that. The Leavy County Journal was the awarded publisher of those, and they are now, along their business. So, a reduction from the board as to whether we need to go back out to bid again since there was a significant reduction in the rates. In fact, it was all the rates, not just the publishing of that, but it's that time. I'm sure Ms. Q will be calling us pretty soon to see what we'll be doing. it's that time, I'm sure Ms. Cooper will be calling us pretty soon to see if we'll be doing that, since she always passes that on to the county. Make that decision as she publishes. We could do that, we could maybe have staff negotiate with the citizen. There's different ways to do it, I would assume, we just need the direction on what to do. I think Mr. Dale Bowen is here with the Chief of the Citizen. I did let him know that this was going to be on the agenda, so Mr. Dale might know speed. Anyhow, that's the question on how to proceed to see. It is a pass-through cost, it's not a true cost to the board, because eventually this money is recouped. But just want to get your direction on. Push, push move. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Cooper?
Yes. My name is Ms. Cooper, I'm from the county of Dole. We don't have to make this decision now, it really doesn't have to be decided until February, maybe we might owe a bit to a new commission from our board. Or perhaps there's a lot of avenues you could go, perhaps stay with the bid. I know it's the documents that are provided online, well, they don't have the documents and all the people in the decision. I think we should see the whole process, that we went through, it was over two sealed bids, but first one was rejected, but technically since it's going to Ms. Brown, so we redid. If you look at some of those documents, you might want to revisit, I agree with this. It is a pass-through cost, that's true, with a lot of that cities may already pass. If you look at some of these documents, Carolyn Zimber, who was in pioneer, even stayed in her bid documents, available with Starfoot Eastern Part of the county. And they were allowed to print that, basically denying people, the chief, CP, the opportunity of having easy access to the information. So not fairness. We went through this whole process, we're no longer in business, I think the bid should stay as it is, precedent has been set. And I don't think you should make a decision today, I think you should wait until you have a new commission. And put more documents online for the public to understand what's going on, and let them make the decision. We elected all of you to make the correct decision for these people, for us as a taxpayer, not one person, and I'd like to see that happen. So I don't think we need to make a decision today, it doesn't have to be done till February, and why is it now, this is almost two years of the day, that Ryan Bell was in his little piazza. And it was not constitutional what he was requesting, he cannot mix and match, making a tax list with board legal. So I think we need to take time, do it, like, thank you, your taxpayers and people that need this information.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have a question. The legal, are they still being charged this price that was funded? Or was it priced for the legal?
No, the bid was, the contract was for the Ledy County Journal, so the citizen wasn't tied to that.
I believe that might be, they might be tied, you have to look at it.
But that's why I'm bringing this to you today.
The details of, I think they have to go along with the bid for that, for the first, for the year that we had it. I think that's what you need to do, you need to make, there's more questions that need to be answered before you jump out there and make a decision.
That's what we're doing right now, Ms. Cooper.
So the question today is, do y'all want to go out to bid, do you want to table it? The reason I'm bringing it now is Ms. Brown brought it to my attention that the time the bid will be short, especially to go out for bid and review the proper advertising, and get to the submissions and the review, and then the awarding of them. That said, there's no other reason that this is on the agenda other than just to get it to you, you're welcome to, you know, to lend a suggestion of whatever, it's just given that. And you know, you're right, now it's going to get short, for a simple fact, you got this month of November, a lot of people want to be going to friends and family's for Thanksgiving, then you got Christmas, and you got the very first of the year, which nobody really gets settled in until the midway of January. And then you want to be right there under the gun, if you left that one, you gotta make a decision again. And now is the appropriate time for next one to see. After you have this, it's a community.
Thank you, boss. Ms. Brown, in the original bid documents, the journal had those bid, they were awarded, citizen had second bid, I don't think anybody else even bid at all, is that correct?
I don't remember.
They only had two, I'm pretty sure, anyway.
Probably right.
Is the citizen bound to their bid? Can we know that?
No.
They're not, so they can do whatever they want at this point, yes, we, we'll go back out to bid.
The citizen's bid at that time, the journal was awarded bid on mine advertisement, six cent, and on display advertisements, one dollar and fifty cent. And then the per inch was one dollar and twenty-seven and one half cents. The citizen, or landmark, no, the citizen, I guess, would be the property, was forty-nine cents as opposed to the six cent. Forty-two cents as opposed to the five and one tenth cents. And then the price per inch of publication was two dollars and ninety-nine cents to the one dollar and fifty cents. And then on the per inch for each subsequent publication was two dollars and fifty-four cents, to the journal's one dollar and twenty-seven and one half cents. So, I mean, it'd be good if the citizen would even honor that, but it's still a reduction from the normal amounts that had been being billed, rotation from the public, from the different companies.
Is that what we're paying now? Because obviously we're running our legal ads in the citizen, it's our only option.
I don't have the rate, I don't have any bills for me, that was just the bid that they submitted, but they were not awarded, the journal was awarded on those rates, and that's what the journal had to, uh, provide.
It doesn't matter to me exactly when we do it, and obviously I think we need to rebid it, I mean, just to keep people honest, I mean, I don't I don't know who would be interested, last time, there was two papers, two publishers that were interested, no outside, you know, games of the sun, or, you know, anybody like that, nobody like that bid. So I, I don't know, but it sounds like we don't have a choice but to rebid it. I mean, the company that won the bid is no longer publishing newspapers, so they can't do the work.
And it was a four-year bid, the bid, you know, had the journal, so, you know, still being in business, would go on to January thirty-first, twenty nineteen. So that's what we're here for today. But I say you want to wait until Mr. Commissioner Brooks has signed in, that's fine, but there's a lot of things here that we can't wait. Not on just this, but I mean, any agenda item, you know, it'd be good to wait, but you can't.
You can't shut down, you can't sit down for three months.
Right.
Ms. Cooper?
I'm open the journal, possibly twelve years on and off in bidding capacities. There's nobody else who can bid on this, so they don't meet the criteria. You're putting out a bid to a monopoly that's already been created. You're, all you're doing is locking in a price that they want, you can decide what you want to pay. You can go with the bid that we, we did as a small local newspaper. They are a large conglomerate that has their own printing presses, and you should be able to honor what the practices for the last two years. Muddy, the water has gotten muddy, and you can decide what you want to do. To put it out to bid, who's going to bid?
I, I agree.
So then you decide.
So whenever we say, all right, we're going to pay you five cent, or six cent, five and a half cent, and they say, no, we're not going to do it for that much, then what is our option?
I don't know, maybe Ms. Brown knows as a legal counsel, or she can outsource it, like, she can most of the stuff to find out, I do not know. But we have done it, the journal did it for two years for that price, we had two sealed bids. It's very unfair when you do a sealed bid, all the information is revealed, and college, what happened on the second bid, based on Ms. Brown's?
Ms. Cooper, I'm asking you not to attack counsel, please.
Well, okay, well, Ms. Brown's notes to us was that we had to rebid it, based on something that she didn't like.
You didn't follow the directions.
I did, Joe, I did follow the directions, and we did follow the directions. If we want to take this a little further, I certainly can. But all I'm saying is, in fairness to the taxpayers, and what we love you people to do, leave at the bid process, we had a sealed bid, it was open. When they rebid, I have to double check about the documents here, but Mr. Bowen decided to sit next to me, so I guess that was maybe an intimidation tactic, I'm not sure. But the bids had been done, we did the first one, everybody got to see it because counsel didn't like it, so we did something wrong, and we redid it again. Now, why have sealed bids if you want to just toss them out and everybody else see it?
There was an issue that, so you did this, this amount, your next bid cannot be zero or whatever, you didn't follow the.
We did follow these, and I filed the documents here, and that's another thing. This information was not provided on the website for the public to know, it was our bid and a blank document. How can we make an informed decision as a community if you don't put it out there? We have no cameras for anybody to do the commission meetings, we have no pa, that doesn't count, that is not a legal, that's a newspaper doing the recording. The commission should have the clerk do that, so people like the rest of us that work can see what's going on, we can see body language, we can hear what's going on. Instead of a newspaper, or the minutes that are scrubbed or whatever, this is all wrong. And I am tired as a taxpayer paying for something I'm not getting. So you can't put it out to bid because a monopoly has been created because the journal is no longer in business. We tried, we tried, so.
This board did not have anything to do with the journal out of business.
I am telling you, we didn't get the information out to the public so they can make an informed decision where their tax dollars are going. That's all I'm saying, you're not putting it out for us to find. I had to dig to get this, I have all the documents for the bids that were forgiven, I can see that on the website. Do you have them, or any of you involved in the bid process? Did you see any of the documents?
The original bid process?
All of them, yes.
Yes, I did.
All of you did. And then why is the public allowed to see the whole process?
Oh, we didn't mention, maybe we request any time?
Oh, come in from work and get the hard copies, it was not on the website for everybody to see, to come to this meeting. I don't know if anybody in here has seen it, I found it because I was a part of it, but no one else in this room has.
I don't understand what your request is.
My request is to adhere to the bid that the journal had, you cannot put it out to bid because there's a monopoly, we've done it for two years, stay with it. You can dictate the price because the monopoly has not been created, if they don't, if they want to refuse to do it, I'd have to see what the legal ramifications of that is, I don't know. I'm not an attorney, maybe somebody else could do it, but there's nobody else who meets the criteria. So you're just wasting the air by putting it out to bid and stacked on.
Well, we don't have a choice, because
Yes, you're right, you don't have a choice.
We cannot force the other bidder to honor anybody's price.
But you can tell them, you can take away the age cost.
Maybe ask them to, to honor the prices they gave in their bid, that may be an option, if that's in the contract.
Maybe you can entertain that.
So, but the matter is, we have to do it, put it out, somebody has to.
But a legal tax was no, that is untrue, and you know as well as I do.
We don't have to present, we don't have to.
You don't have to do anything now, now. I'll, I'll get on the agenda for next week, oh, for the next meeting, that's, that's not a problem, I'll get all of my information, and I'll do a dog and pony show for you, it's not a problem, there might be information. Yes, sir, we can continue on it, so people understand what, what's going on in this community. I could start a blog, start a website, I don't have to have a newspaper, to work for Donald Trump with Twitter and everything, why not me?
Sir, you haven't started to date to honor the bids that y'all put in?
No, I did not, but I would like to address the board if, when she starts.
Okay, I want to make one second before we go any further with this, okay? We're not going to table this, we're going to make a decision today, we're not going to wait until Danny Stevens gets off this board. He's been here for sixteen years, he's made good wise decisions, and he's making one today, and we're going to make it today, and we ain't going to put it off.
Well, I'm.
Now honor, I honor and respect Commissioner Stevens that much.
The way the bid process works is, if you don't like the bid that you get, you don't have to accept it, you can say nothing. I, I don't understand why it's a.
But this is a unique.
That's how the bid process works, if I don't like the price.
No, that's, that's true, and I'm.
All right, Mr. Bowen, would you like to come forward, Ms. Cooper, please?
Please, no.
Let Ms. Bowen speak, now, if you don't leave, why don't you stay? I enjoy your company.
Oh, I wasn't leaving.
Really?
Well, he sat right here?
No, I'd like for you to let Mr. Bowen know, Austin doesn't want to stand up.
He sat next to me, so I thought, figured it was okay.
I know, Mr. Bowen, I know we're going to have this much on today, but basically, the, what might be a prudent approach is, is, let's, you know, meet down and discuss with the, to negotiate with Mr. Moody.
One thing we don't know, we don't know how many pages there are going to be, remember with this lead right past, I know it gets complicated, because there's there's differences in circulation that certainly were part of the original bid process, but I think what we need to find out from when this kind of heads up, what you think is part of times, pages are going to be. We don't, we're actually trying to price if it's based on the number of taxes, we're going to, like, it looks like it's going to be a lot of, I don't know, the actual page count will be the same or similar what it was last year, but that's a question we need to entertain. Um, but what might be, might be, we might have some information from her, about what we're going to make expectations, we have as far as the number of pages, if we sit down and develop, so. Any questions?
The, 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 the process goes, you know, how many pages, you know, you'll know what you're, you'll know what, it's supposed to be four even then.
Yeah, yeah, we can, we can, based on the number of listings there, our, it looks like there's a huge increase in the number of tax fees, I'm not sure how that affects them, whether they get, you know, honored. But if we do that, I mean, actually, if we're talking about what we're talking about. But, but again, as far as the, what the, the previous bid, I mean, you had a agreement with the journal, kind of all our business, um, that's, I think that's it seems like it should be terminated, or it's already going to be, but that's what I'd be difficult to stand on, make a relation, go back to the board.
Ms. Bowen, you have a question?
No, I have a comment. The order then that Dan Smart said with what the journal, and so I would expect that the chief of the citizen would not be going higher.
No, Mr. Chairman, it's my, I'm going to go backwards and then I'm going to come back forward. It's been my understanding, when we was, for years now, it appears that legal advertisements in newspapers are slowly going away. People aren't buying newspapers as near as much as they used to, everybody's looking on the internet because it's more accessible, apparently. I'm not an internet person, so I don't know that, I don't buy papers, so I'm one of those that doesn't buy. But it was my understanding several years ago, and I think I already said this, but I'm going to say it again, that at some point in time, if I'm remembering correctly, legislation is allowing things to go to the internet in, in the form of not going to paper, putting it out there that way. That way, anybody that wants to see it doesn't have to spend fifty cents, seventy-five cents, whatever the cost of paper is to see it, unless the, what you're looking at has a news video or something like that. Now, with that being said, to go back to what Mr. Now, with that being said, to go back to what Mr. Bowen had said, uh, didn't know how many this and that it would be. I think historical practice, you could go back x number of years and see and, and come up with that determination. It, it, it shouldn't be that hard. Um, do we need to move forward and, and redid this process? You betcha. Because the person we have a contract with is no longer in existence. And I think we've done some type of action several months ago to do away with, if I remember correctly, getting one. Uh, so, with that being said, given the understanding that you got Thanksgiving is this month, Christmas is next month, the first of years will be here next week, if you, if you've got a busy schedule. So we need to move forward and advertise and redid the process. What I would simply suggest, given I'm not going to be here, is if the board chooses to do that, is to look at the new modern technology. You got internet newspapers, you got all of that, plus you got papers. Now, I noticed the other day that the Gangrel Sun, it is, appears to be shrinking in size almost undebating. Is it coincidence? I don't know. For the time of year, I don't know. But you've got more avenues here to advertise, to get to people than you do, than you normally would by saying that they're a major conglomerate, it's taken over, so this board created that which we get. And I'll leave it at that, but I will make a motion to move forward and start advertising for bids, whether it be internet or by paper.
Any legal means, any legal means whatsoever.
And I look up, come in, your company, Mr. Chairman, interact, come in on Mr. Stevens. If you have two companies, you can take Williston High School, Middle School. The company that bid, they hide below its bid on that school. Come back later and say, there's no way possible we can do it that. We've got to have, I may forget, how many, what money was.
Thirteen million more dollars.
Yeah. So they didn't put it out to rebid. They went to the second bidder, the second lowest bidder. So why did we have to put it out to rebid? Why did we have to rebid? Why can't we put it out to the second lowest bidder?
Because we live in a free market economy and the cheap and citizen may not honor that bid. If they would honor their bid, I think that would make things clearer and easier. But they have the option, because they did not win the bid, to, under the circumstances, uh, would, would you consider us contacting Mr. Bowen's, uh, ownership and find out if they would honor what they bid two years ago? With the second lowest bid?
Can we take Williston, Mr. Bowen, to make his long call?
Uh, we have a motion on the floor.
Oh.
And, uh, I think what he says makes sense, because there may be another option beyond judicial prudential.
Except you're required by statute, it has to go in and...
As well do prudential?
Yes, you, you can add, in your bid process, you can have the bidders add the internet, but you have got to have the paper you, they have on it, yeah.
And we did not confine it to Leaning County because we don't have a local purchasing ordinance. So I don't know that, you know, the question come up to the newscaster meet the demands, I don't know. Does the Gangrel Sun do it? I don't know. They don't do the one in Lachlan County, it's done through, I think, uh, independent and out of Lachlan. But I mean, it's not tied to the county, so if you put it out for bid, no telling who it goes to. I know Linda, Linda, I just was looking at the Gangrel Sun this morning, and there was the legal ad in front of the tax collector that the tax rolls are open today, you can start paying your, so she put it in that paper, that was the circulation. And hopefully, she put it in the local paper. But, uh, but Commissioner Stevens is right, as far as classifies, people using credit list and credit rating and everything else out there, so when you look at the classifieds now, whether it's health one or the what, they're going to just, they're, no, well, it's the Gangrel Sun and a few other papers.
Why do we can't go to the second lowest bidder, let's put it out, we can bid.
The, the, the process, so, the, the process is what, we don't have to accept it either. There you go. I mean, that's the way, we don't like it, we don't have to accept.
You can put it in there that this board has the opportunity to accept or reject any and all bids.
Standard language.
Yeah. So you, you got, you can make that your mind, as, as to which one you think is the most qualified ever.
But, we're taking way too much time on this, but do we pan ourselves in the corner if we put it out for bid, they give us a price and we reject it, then where's, what's your next option?
Redid again, I mean, we've, we've done it several times, we redid, we redid my process.
You can always negotiate with the most fit, or if only, uh, to lower that price even more.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Stevens to put out the bid. Do you want your second on that motion? Sorry, put the motion as second. Motion by Stevens, second by Commissioner Rock Meeks. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
All right. Okay, the second item I have is, uh, in your packet. We have, uh, is a request approval of the attached request for qualifications for engineering, slash engineering consultants and to advertise for same purposes to establish a library of pre-qualified providers. Uh, we have talked about this with various boards in the past and, and such, and, uh, we have developed this RFQ, Ms. Brown has, uh, examined it. So this is the RFQ that I'd like to get your approval on to advertise and to send out to non-engineering firms that are interested in responding to it. I have a, a brief timeline there for you. Uh, proposed schedule, November eighth, the release of the request for qualifications, which would be today. Uh, November twenty-ninth, the responses to the RFQ proposals overdue prior to three P M at the Office of the Board of County Commissioners. Uh, opening of the proposals will occur at that time. And then December the sixth, probably in the afternoon, would be the evaluation of proposals and interviews by the Board of County Commissioners of the, uh, firms. And then the selection of three or five or whatever y'all want to make up that library of. This does not in any way affect our contract with mills and hearing. This is to get a, a, a library of engineers pre-qualified, because today, when some things come up, there's a very short window there to be able to respond to it. And you don't have time necessarily for the allotted advertising and doing the selection process and all. So this way, and many counties are doing this, uh, and many have, and have them pre-qualified and ranked, and then whatever their expertise is, and sue staff or someone who called them, go forward.
Or they can even come in at that time and give some proposal, quote, for their services. On pitch, on the direction.
You, you'll have to work with the new purchasing coordinator and what kind of process they want to use. If a project comes online, what kind of process we would do to actually pick the, the different, pick appropriate engineer for that project. And you do it on a rotating basis, and if they get the, you know, the work as evenly as possible. One of the things this will help with too is FDOT's new rule that the nine engineer can't do the inspection, so you're going to need inspection engineers.
So this graph, now one disclaimer, oh, excuse me. But one disclaimer that Ms. Brown has pointed out in there, and she says, and while I deleted the comment from the RFQ, I wanted to remind you that this RFQ is not designed to qualify under the federal procurement guidelines. So if there are jobs that need engineering services that are paid for by federal funds, those will need a separate selection process. We will not be able to use an engineer from this pool to select one under this RFQ for them. So just wanted to put that out there. And, and a procurement ordinance is being worked on as we speak. And a procurement department is being worked on as we speak.
Ms. Gannon?
Mr. Chairman, uh, I would like for Mr. Moody to tell us in percent approximately how many federal cases we would have and how many monies.
And I'm sorry, I couldn't come up with an answer for that, but you know, Ms. Conley, in transit, is, is a lot of federal uh, monies involved. And some FDOT things now trend over to federal funds that are leftover or something. We'll get a call sometime like the sidewalks, I think. Uh, Mr. Meeks was at a meeting and was talking to the Secretary of Transportation, and they said there was some federal funds there. We had to go through a process just to get training for staffing or to get qualified to even be eligible to submit. But I, I don't have...
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Rooks. Second by Commissioner Rock Meeks. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Uh, the next item I have has to do with the transition of me to retirement. So I'm asking that, I'm asking, I'm asking that Mr. Wilberdine be appointed the interim county coordinator during this transition process, just for the things that we have talked about this morning, such as newspaper ads, RFQ process, uh, the procurement process. There's a lot of things that's ongoing that, uh, he needs to be in charge of in addition to hiring the procurement officer and those kind of things. So with that said...
The motion by Commissioner Rooks, second by Commissioner Meeks. Mike, Danny, they really begin to pile up on y'all here, and let them, at least throw your hand in there once in a while.
Saving y'all a lot of hard day to come again, from you said, hey, did you all hear the guy make that call?
I was going to blame you all for everything, it was all Danny's fault. All in favor, please, is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Do we, Mr. Chairman, addressing the board. Mr. Dean's going to be on a hand or a foot, kind of, later. Do we need to start the process and up and up, uh, host and position for the county?
They are looking on a job description as we speak.
Thank you, gentlemen.
One of the things that we will have to decide down the road is, during this process, is, is do we want to continue with the county coordinator position like we have with Mr. Moody, or we update it to a more modern county manager title that has a few more leeways or duties, but that's, that tends, that seems to be the trend, that counties are getting away from county coordinator and go to county manager. Not to be confused with the county administrator, which has statutory responsibilities and, and rights that kind of sometimes supersede them.
For our form, for our form of government here, I wouldn't recommend county administrator. That is defined in the Florida statutes, and I think someone told the commissioner one time that they need to look at the statutes for his job description. I'm now your county coordinator, because he is no longer your county administrator. So, uh, I would highly recommend to y'all that, that the, uh, that the position be, uh, county manager. I really would. And when you look at these, uh, the next item I have actually is just information on when we were talking about meeting times and schedules. I took the thirty-six member counties from the Small County Coalition and contacted them to see what their meeting schedules were like. And when you look at that list, even though this is from their, the Small County Coalition's twenty-four, ten, twenty-fifteen, some of the, some of the people have changed in there. But Columbia County at that time was county coordinator, Dale Williams, is now county manager, uh, in Columbia County. And Dixie County, Tim Alexander, is now your county manager, or was a county coordinator. And Gilchrist County, Bobby Crosby is your county administrator, and from when it was county coordinator under Ronnie McQueen. So the trend is right, is the, the job description defines a job, it's the title. And out of the, uh, out of these thirty-six counties, I think there's only five county coordinators, including myself, left, uh, with that title. So I would urge y'all to consider that. Now, when you look at the schedules, uh...
Hang on, when I look at this.
Oh, okay, you got it, yeah.
Ms. Tony?
Um, wait a clarification. When Mr. Dean came on board, was that an interim?
No, ma'am, that was...
So why are you going through this now?
The title to that was assistant to the county coordinator at that time.
Oh, so you're just talking title?
Correct.
Okay, so you're not going to go through the whole interview process all over again? I mean, Mr. Dean, is that...
That's for this board to decide.
Yeah, we're making, my request is to make him the interim county coordinator to have all of the duties and responsibilities that I now have. I will be leaving, my retirement date's December twenty-third, but I could actually be out of here by December the fifth, because I have about fifteen days of annual leave and all that.
All right, well, then, let me restate my question, because maybe I didn't make myself clear. When you went through this process and brought Mr. Dean on board, was it not with the idea that he would become your replacement when you leave, when you left?
Not at, not, not at that time. It was strictly for an assistant, which he will also be looking to, or whoever it is will be looking for an assistant to them at that time.
It was not, it was not a coordinator in waiting position. It was not a, this is...
You're going to go through the whole interview process and advertise?
That's really important to decide what we're going to do. I think for transparency and for, and for clarity and for all fairness to all parties involved, that may be what we want to do, but that's only my opinion. That's not, there's four other people here who can decide what they want to do. I, I've spoken to Mr. Dean, he doesn't have a problem with that.
And Ms. Collins, that for sure would be the new board that Ms. Linda mentioned. You know, that would be something after Commissioner, or Mr. Rooks is...
This is, this is just, we're anticipating Freddie being out of the office an extended period of time over the next two months. Wilbur already has the authority and ability to sign documents and do everything that Freddie has. This is just to confirm that on the board. The board confirming that until we get to the date of, we decide whether or not we're going to advertise, we're going to just appoint, or appoint Wilbur, or we're going to do whatever we're going to do. Go outside the, the system and advertise or advertise within the county system.
Or not at all.
Not, not at all. Why do you keep referring to the new board? One person...
I did not say new board, that was Freddie Stevens.
That was...
I mean, one person doesn't make this one vote.
I know, but when they have a swearing in, they call it a new board. That's just my fourteen years of, I've used that same terminology every election season, a new board. Sometimes there was no change at all, but it's still a new board, in my opinion, so that's why I mentioned...
That's why we're getting ready. Yes. So we have a motion and a second to appoint Wilbur as the interim. Do you want to take a vote on that? I don't believe we did.
No, we didn't.
Just trying to...
I thought you did.
Yeah, you did.
I did, I was just to be sure. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, the last item I have...
It wasn't the line. Wow, that didn't take long.
Uh, the last item I have, um, in response to, uh, the discussion at last meeting about meeting times, I did look at, uh, the members of the Small County Coalition. Uh, there's thirty-six members of that. Uh, did verify their meeting times and all, because the roster had changed somewhat. Uh, twenty-three of those thirty-six counties have meetings, at least one meeting a month after five P M. Some, some are at six, some are at five, some five-thirty. The twenty-three of the thirty-six do have an evening or an afternoon meeting. Some actually, I think Gilchrist County, uh, meets twice a month, uh... Some actually, I think Gilchrist County meets twice a month. I have it in here. And they meet at two o'clock on one of them and four o'clock on the other. I don't know. So that's what it is. Most of the meetings are on Tuesdays, some are on Monday and Thursdays, some are on Tuesday and Thursdays.
DeSoto meets...
It's just, you can look at them. All of these are very current. This is from last week and the little one they do.
DeSoto meets on the fourth Tuesday at three and six-thirty. And I called the commissioner down there and he said six-thirty is for...
Ordinances and...
Planning, land use, stuff like that. So they don't always meet on at six-thirty. They...
But that's when they do theirs, is the one that's advertised as six-thirty.
Well...
Liberty County, but then it's a very, very small county. They just meet the first Thursday after the first Monday at six p.m. That's about the only one, I think, that only meets once.
Right out of time, because on my sheet, we quit on Washington County.
That was the last one?
We don't have that.
Was that Indian, Indian River and something?
Well, those are associate numbers. I just took accurate numbers. Well, Waukulla County, first Monday at five, third Monday at five. Walton County, the second Tuesday at four p.m., the fourth Tuesday at nine a.m. But I guess what I'm saying is that twenty-three of the thirty-six do have a meeting after five p.m.
At least one.
So at least one. So that's not anything you have to decide today. Again, you can wait till the new commission's coming in and make that decision.
You've worked that word, don't you? I did my math a little differently whenever I added mine up. So I came up with fifteen and a half of the meetings are in the afternoon and seventeen and a half are in the morning. But if somebody met, because somebody meet one meeting in the morning and one meeting in the evening, so that was a half, you know, they wouldn't have met both anyway. I'm gonna throw this out there and again, we don't have to make a decision today, but Ms. Louie has shown the interest in going to a evening meeting. And I know a lot of times when we make decisions thinking that we're really doing the right thing and in the end it doesn't work out as we anticipated. But I know that some other board members at the last meeting as well, myself, have an issue with the Tuesday morning meetings following a Monday holiday. And I think that may be a good experiment, time if you will, for maybe the next year moving forward, somebody can come back and decide at the next meeting, whatever, Forrest will still be here and there may be a new guy. Well, I didn't want to say new board, though. But anyway, seriously, something we can decide on and we can do it going forward, we can see that on a trial basis and see if attendance improves, attendance goes down, is there more cost involved that we're not anticipating, but have to keep the bailiffs here, you know, keeping staff around and there's unintended consequences of doing this. So we can do it on a very limited basis. The Tuesday after Labor Day comes to mind, Tuesday after Memorial Day, I don't think the Tuesday after Fourth of July, Tuesday after Martin Luther King Day. You know, these are Monday holidays and we can move it back. So we have at least that day, Tuesday, to ask questions, to consult with staff that we normally would not have by nine o'clock Tuesday mornings, everybody's off on Monday.
The other thing about nine o'clock, some of these do start their meetings if it's a morning meeting at ten, that's something to think about, especially if you have a direct condition, when you have a ball team cheer or should have to get here at nine o'clock and all of that. So there's some that meet at nine. There's some counties that in November, December only have one meeting a month, which is their first meeting. They don't have that second one because you get into the Thanksgiving weekend or holiday and then Christmas. So there's, anything that you really want to do, you can do. I think the goal was to look at having evening meetings. We tried on the floor, did get a lot of participation, but times change. I mean, that would be y'all's call moving forward. I just wanted to give y'all that of the small county coalition members, to just look at them and see. Main thing was that many do have evening meetings to serve their citizens that can't get it.
What's the pleasure of the board? Are we going to make a decision today or are we going to bring this back? Do you have a motion to table? I have a different consideration. So we'll bring it back, but I don't have an issue with these meetings.
Mr. Chair, I don't know if you... But the county had their option along with the sheriff's office. It was pretty good. The county's portion of it was eighteen thousand eight hundred eighty-seven dollars ninety-one cent. The auctioneers did have an advantage that the next time tried to have an auction for something that's running. So that might have helped with the price, but also salvage prices are down and they had very, with any salvage, people there. Basically nineteen thousand dollars worth of junk on this.
It's freed up some space in addition to, we got rid of some stuff that maybe in two more years would have been...
Sheriff's office, it's done pretty good.
So several of those that won't run for fifteen dollars, I think. We did, we had a little over thirty thousand, I believe is what they reported to me. So and again...
All that stuff that was pure junk, now, Sheriff.
Junk, it was junk. We brought parts off of it.
I was amazed that...
And we still got, it wasn't all sold. We still got two or three pieces of junk, but...
The ambulance, I think, that had the accident with the car driver, I mean, they had stripped everything off of it except for the floorboard, the doorpost and the front pender support. I mean, that brought a couple hundred dollars and he's like, what? Did somebody have anything to do with that? But then we had Crown Dix, old cop cars that were there that had some damage. Did you go and touch it?
The mechanical bulls went good.
Yes, that was shocking. I was going to suggest we buy and have like a traveling shuttle of county commissioners.
I do want to, I do want to compliment the sheriff's officer because some of the vehicles that they either got through a drug bust or whatever, they did transfer some of those over to some county departments that were in need. So they enjoyed eating larger sale, but the veteran service officer is going to just name one. He's got the vehicle now.
That's a nice car, dude.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Ms. Brain. Mr. Dean.
First off, I'd like to say, I'm honored to be in this, third is in Trump. But what I'm here today to present is a proclamation for pancreatic cancer and it begins off, whereas in two thousand sixteen, it estimated fifty-three thousand seventy people in the United States will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer. One of the deadliest cancers, and forty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty will die from the disease. Whereas pancreatic cancer surpassed breast cancer this year, becomes the third leading cause of cancer death in the United States. And it is projected to become the second leading cause by twenty-twenty. And whereas pancreatic cancer is the only major cancer with a five-year relative survival rate in single digits at just eight percent. And whereas from symptoms of pancreatic cancer presents itself, it is generally in later stages and seventy-one percent of pancreatic cancer die within the first year of the diagnosis. Whereas approximately three thousand and eighty deaths will occur in Florida in two thousand sixteen. And whereas pancreatic cancer is a seventh common cause of cancer-related death in men and women across the world. And whereas it will be estimated four hundred and eighteen thousand four hundred and fifty-one new pancreatic cancer cases diagnosed worldwide in two thousand sixteen. And whereas a good health and well-being of residents of Levy County are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness about pancreatic cancer and research into early detection and causes some effective treatments. Therefore, be it proclaimed by the board county commissioners of Levy County that the seventeenth day of November two thousand sixteen be designated Levy County as World Pancreatic Cancer. Newly adopted this eighth day of November.
No, I'm... Can I make this motion to approve?
Motion by Commissioner Rooks. Second by Commissioner Rooks. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. She carries. All right, public safety.
I have a comment for you. I'm going to make it a little bit crazy today.
Yeah, I'm not complaining, but these churches are easy to read.
Drew, was you rolling the yard on the day where you took the tree? You had your mask on. Oh, I don't know if y'all took the tree or rolling the yard. I threw you some candy out.
Was it candy or was it change? Candy or change?
Candy.
Because people told me, you know, the kids on your block said, you just gave them pennies. I'm not saying you cheat, but pennies don't go very far.
What's going on me and Big?
Shorty, I'm ready.
You're getting early in summer.
Okay, so the record is a little bit behind though, even your report updates, as you know, we're a little bit back now. So this report will remain completely up to date and complete the last physical reports. Overview. So you know, Chief Harold began his post as director of our department versus the condo and the board had heard from me that was interesting. As we do, we're a large department, there's a lot going on, so we save some time to get to know the department very intimately, meeting with individuals and things that are happening. Working on making the department better. We did have our training back in our prior beginning of September, as you know. We have a prior hire by David Scott who's got the place to kind of fill in those roles and make sure that our training is continuing as needed. Quarterly, we have our mandatory EMS meetings where medical records come to and meets with all of our staff, as well as last quarterly meeting at the end of October. In our quarterly, the medical center contacts to bring their, some of our doctors out first and talk about stroke care and treatment. So that was really good. Yes. Well, there's always new things coming up, so I understand how the part training is. We have a lot of events coming up with the holidays, parades. We just did some of the homecoming parades and stuff like that. We had the peanut festival and these things that were participated in, so we have a lot of those things coming up. Our internal annual holiday Christmas party is coming up, so we'll be announcing our employee of the year as voted by our peers. Over in that permission table, this kind of tiny, you can't see that great, but here's a breakdown of it. We have ninety-eight members currently, eleven stations, one of which is dual fire and EMS, and thirty-eight apparatus. That's between admin apparatus, EMS apparatus and fire.
Ms. Cannon.
Mr. Chairman, under the eleven stations for fire, and it says two, which two?
There's one in Mon Brook and there's one in Gulf Hamlet that are inactive and not staffed.
But there is a staff station in Morrison-Mon Brook.
Okay, but I mean, why are they not staffed?
Because the Mon Brook station hasn't been in existence for years. It was Morrison-Mon Brook and the station was originally at three twenty-six at Railroad Tracks and that's where they worked that up. Now, today, they have just moved to one twenty-one south.
And what was the other one? And who handled that?
Gulf Hamlet was historically a volunteer fire department and their apparatus was turned over to the county where they can no longer adequately provide staffing. They ran out of volunteers, basically.
They actually transferred their acre of land that they had acquired from GP also.
Ma'am, just keep them out getting on that chair, Freddie.
I've come for protection, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, it sounds to me like you've got a short timer's attitude.
You might be a trip and murder.
That's why I'm going down before I did.
Calls for service historically, January through March is a little bit busier. We have our snowbirds that we're taking care of. We're right around two hundred back and forth for fire. Fire types. So we have to report our types of fires, all of our reports, to what's called NIPR. That's the National Fire Incident Reporting System. The standard reporting system used to describe fire department responses and they use it to collect data. Our biggest response is going to be EMS calls. So you can see on the chart, forty-eight and a half percent of our calls, we're going to EMS calls to support rescue operations through EMS.
Ms. Cannon.
It says nine categories of incident types. Category six hundred good intent call. What is that?
I'm going to take a stab at it, but I'll at least...
Fifteen point nine percent.
Chief Harold.
A good intent call is where if you see smoke and you call it in, you think it's a brush fire, but we show up and it's actually someone just cooking out on their grill. That's a good intent call. EMS calls for service, again, we see our highest number in January to March, but we're running around nineteen hundred calls per quarter. And Chief Williston maintains the area stations followed by Bronson. Transport's total for the three quarters is about four thousand fifty. They did a breakdown of where we're transporting to North Florida and Shands, it's going to be where we transport majority to. Scott is six and six. We're seeing a pretty good China this March, was a little interesting with twelve out of zero having their units in the county for that month. But we're averaging around three, four, so that's pretty good for us. Response times. NFPA wants to see a fourteen-minute response time to eighty percent of the incidents in rural areas and we are at eight point seven eight minutes for a combined average total for the three quarters, so we're doing really well with that. Now, that number does only take into effect our squads because that is our most used unit that we're on, but that doesn't take into account our bankers who go so fast to be pulled out large and that heavy. EMS, what they're looking for is eight minutes or less, but that does not take into... EMS, what they're looking for is eight minutes or less, but that does not take into account rural settings. So for these three quarters combined, our average is ten point four minutes, which is pretty good. We've seen nine, we've seen ten, we've seen eleven, we've seen twelve, but this ten point four is pretty good for us. EMS billing that you have outsourced, we maintain right under a seventy percent collection rate. This graph is based on the date of service, so you'll see that it's very low for August and September appointments. The numbers will increase as time goes on. And we did bill for four thousand forty-two total transports for those three quarters.
Way better than what it was in the rest of the year, like twenty percent. Any questions for Alicia?
I'm trying to do like the way you done it.
It says here fiscal. Fiscal fifteen slash sixteen second quarter folder, the night of. January sixteenth to March sixteenth, the total amount, four hundred thirty-one thousand seven hundred one dollars and eight cents.
Yes, you're on the next item. We'll let her speak on that and then we'll, that's the next item. Any questions about the quarterly report? Really, a third quarterly report? Very nice that you've been on probably a lot of information for us. Anybody else?
No, very good.
Yes.
Very good. Next time.
Okay, so as well, usually when we do our quarterly reports, we do our quarterly write-offs, so we have the three quarters worth of that as well. The second quarter total for fiscal year fifteen sixteen was four hundred and thirty-one thousand seven oh one oh eight. Third quarter was two hundred and thirty-seven thousand twenty-three twenty, and fourth quarter was one hundred and eighty-seven thousand seventy-eight twenty-seven. You'll notice, and I provided information on the previous year as well as the first quarter of the fiscal year. You'll notice the first quarter showed the significant decrease in write-offs and then the large increase for the second quarter. We did have some billing issues that we got through with that, and that's kind of why you'll see part of that. Another problem was the majority of our write-offs are bad debt. In the first quarter, our bad debt write-offs were significantly less and payments received on bad debt accounts were significantly more in the next quarters. So that's where you're seeing the increase in the second.
And what does M C mean? Says E M heads slash M C.
That's the name of the company that does our student.
So really, the second quarter being so exaggerated was kind of making up for what we didn't do in the first quarter.
Right, and our, our average monthly write-offs were about seventy-two thousand five hundred and eighty-five dollars. That's a six percent less per month than in previous years. So it's looking better, actually.
Mike, this is where you normally chime in, if people should be paying a bill. I guess not. Are there any questions about the write-offs? Do I hear a motion to argue the write-offs?
I think a whole lot there that was four or five years ago. What we got, the people they helped, something to help us do. They were down to like thirteen percent. Right then. Yeah, so y'all done, very good.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Rockmeek, so I hear second.
Yeah, second.
Any questions about the write-offs? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Uh, all opposed? Carries.
Thank you.
Ms. Brown.
Good morning. Before I start my ads, I noticed my annual report has been handed out. I will, you should have one now. I'll also get you my evaluation, because we're gonna have to hand that out.
I'll read this in evaluation.
You can score me on it, go right ahead. First item I have is similar to the item I had at the last board meeting where we had a claim or fee for anyone's services in the state. Probably after it got to my office, but the, it had a delay from the, from the building company. We had straightened that out, I would say, just talk, we need to immediately, we get this notice. So hopefully that will solve that problem. This claim was considerably smaller, it was four hundred and twelve dollars. The attorney for the personal representative filed an objection, but I contacted him to discuss what we did with the last one. And this one is a little bit different than the last one that you had. Had we filed the claim sooner, where he wouldn't have done an objection, we probably would have gotten to the end and received nothing. Because all of the property in the state is exempt from the claim. So he did come back with an offer from the family for two hundred dollars. This is something the family wants to do, because they want to do the right thing, and two hundred dollars is coming out of their pockets. And so this one is a little bit different than the last one, because there really isn't any property to pay. But the family still wants to do that thing. So the request is to make a decision on that settlement offer, a two hundred dollar bill. Two hundred dollars for the four hundred and twelve dollars and thirty-eight cent bill, and then authorize me to sign the lease.
Next motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Jordan, second by Commissioner Lewis, is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Uh, opposed? Carries.
The next item is a leftover from the last probate estate claim. Just some bookkeeping they did except for seventy-five percent. That checked, I think, the next day or the day after. I went ahead and signed the release of claims so that they could get their estate closed. And I'm just asking for you all to authorize and ratify me signing that.
Motion and second, is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Carries. All right, moving on, we need to reach for a second public comment section. Does anyone here would like to speak or have public comments? Mr. Collins.
I just have a question. Does the EMS department notify the county attorney's office when there's, when a person's deceased? So that they can meet that ninety-day requirement for the most decredulous?
No, there's a lot of times where they wouldn't know whether they were out right after they got to the hospital or not. I mean, I don't know, no, they don't.
There's nothing set up to communicate that. Ninety, ninety days is a small window.
I admit that, but I think there is some issues with HIPAA.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, public safety. That is, I'd have to get the attorney, but I'm pretty sure that would be a violation of it. To, to anything regardless of what it is, regardless of the patient is deceased or not, it's still covered under HIPAA.
So you're not allowed to say that?
No, medical care is, we're not allowed to discuss that, the outcome of the patient, anything without the patient giving authorization or a healthcare legal, healthcare recognized healthcare service giving us permission to do so.
Are you aware of any other systems in any other counties in the state where there's something set up?
No, ma'am, a lot of, several places that I know of, they just automatically just don't pursue that debt. What that you get from insurance companies is, or will follow the bill, but anything else is just forgiven and they don't pursue it.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Did you take a vote on that? We have a motion to second.
Yeah, you do.
Yeah, because we want all the public comments. Please, Sheriff. Anybody else have public comment? I'm on me. Yeah, right. My mind's slipping. Before we, before we, before we move on to recognizing the other elected officials. I, I really regret that we didn't do this earlier in the, in the meeting. So that's on me, I'll take, take the hit for this. As everyone may be well aware, Commissioner Stevens has served this county for sixteen years and he did not get re-elected in the primary. And so he would be leaving us. And that's, that's tough for me personally, nothing against the newly-elected commissioner, but Commissioner Stevens has a lot of knowledge and a lot of history. That Ms. Lilly has, so we have, we have Ms. Lilly still around, and that's good. So there was some time she wasn't here, okay? Don't make this into something it ain't. Danny has always been.